So the application to this question concerns every religionist. The thinking religionist poses the same objection and question. If you say some religionists do not believe and are condemned, doesn't that cancel God's word and make him a liar? God's word promises the religious person special privilege and the hope of eternal life. These words tell us to believe Jesus and to possess his word, to be baptized and to join the fellowship of the church. If we do not, if we do that and God still condemns us, is he not canceling his word and making himself a liar? Am I, am I bugging someone here? Or do you feel... Brother Arton, I agree with you, no sir, but we're gonna understand really the root of the matter. I guess you're taking this in so much hearing that isn't God a liar? Isn't that, so that you must be now kinda excited really to see what is gonna be said. Cause certainly we know he's not a liar, okay? But the Bible says, "God forbid." The NIV says, "Not at all." God will be faithful. His word and promise of salvation will stand even if every man lies about believing and lies about giving his heart to serve Jesus. The promise of salvation still stands. Even if everyone lies, he's not removing the promise of salvation. That means he's faithful. He's not moving it. God will prove his word. He will be justified and proven faithful in what he has said. He will still save any person who give his heart to Jesus and obey Jesus. He will still do it. His promise remains. God is not a human that he changes his mind. He's not a man.
He never lies.
He never lies. In fact, God will overcome. He will prove his word and, um, his word another way. He will judge all who makes false profession. So if any among us in my ear in this forum, if you're, if you're just professing to be a Christian, I would encourage you to introspect and make a change. Go to God, seek him, ask for forgiveness. Get serious in your Christian walk. We all make mistakes. We're all human. But if you're hearing this kind of teaching, you owe it to yourself. You owe it to your eternity. You owe it to your family. You owe it to the legacy that you're gonna leave behind. Too, because God will judge though all who makes false profession and who judge him and his word, who accuse him of being unfaithful and canceling his word. David himself said that God would judge the unfaithful and disobedient in Psalm fifty-one, verse four. David had sinned greatly, not keeping the commandment of God. So God judged David and charged him with sin. David did the right thing. He confessed his sin and repented, beginning to live righteously. David also did something else. He declared that God's charge and judgment against him was just. God's charge and judgment against our sin, the sin that we are committing, is just. Remember what we learned earlier at the beginning of Romans? That we end up living under the wrath of God. Because we are not doing what God expects us to do. We are going after the things that do not please us, God. And so we end up, and when I say we, we're talking we Christians, end up living under the wrath of God. Another word for wrath is judgment. And a lot of us think that, oh, the judgment day is coming when, when Jesus comes. And maybe by then I, I, I will change. I will start doing the things. So you know what? I'm gonna live on the edge and maybe I can still do my sin and so on. And you know what, God, God is so merciful. And he understands because I'm not perfect. He understands. Listen, the wrath of God is on us who sins. And so we are under the wrath. The final judgment is coming, the final wrath is coming. But we continue to live under the wrath of God. And sometimes we are messed up, our family life are messed up. The church is weak and all because we are living under the wrath of God. I always say, how could Apostle Peter, his shadow passes over a lame person and the person healed? Is not Jesus the same yesterday, today and forever? Is it not his spirit living in me? And that I should be able to do that too? So I'm not here knocking you guys. I'm knocking everybody, including myself. We need to look at what we're doing. Because we are living in a dying world. And we need to make God's call us out of the darkness into this marvellous light to do our work. He said we would be doing more, much more work than he does. And maybe you don't understand why. How could we do more work than Jesus? Of course, Jesus was not omnipresent when he was on earth. He was in one place at each time. His spirit now lives in every believer across the globe. So we can do more work than he did when he was on earth. He said it in his own words. I'm not putting words in the Bible. But that's how you understand. Are we living that life that we can do more work than Jesus did? And, and God was, or God is always just. And he's always justified in what he sees and does. The point is this, God is not unfaithful. The point is too full, he's not unfaithful. God never cancels his words. And we're gonna look at those two points in detail. God never breaks or cancels his word. When he rejects the religionists. So it is saying God didn't break or cancel his word when he rejected the religionists. The religionists who possess God's words and belong to a church, but does not obey God's word. They possess it, belong to a church. I go to Scarborough Family Worship Center. I'm a part of the church of God of prophecy. I went, I go to Betel, I go to this. But they do not possess the word. They possess the word, I mean. They belong to a church, but do not obey the words is not acceptable to God. So whether you baptize your church member, you circumcise your Abraham seed, if you do not obey the word of God, God is rejecting you. And that's what we need to take in our spirit. It is righteousness God is after, not religion. God is not after an outward religion. The Pharisees, Jesus said, look like what? Whitewashed tomb. On the outside, they look good. But there is all kind of corruption on the inside. So God is not looking for an outward religion, but an inward righteousness. God wants a heart that will not only possess the Bible, but will keep his commandment. If you love me, you'll keep my commandments. Do we love Jesus? No, we're not saying we are all perfect and we won't mess up, mess up at times. But we have to keep a very short account. And that's why I encourage and I myself try to do my best. Every time you go to God, go with a repentive heart. Cause you don't know when you sin. The Bible says sin lurks in our heart. Who are us to discern the sin that is in our heart? Psalm nineteen, verse twelve, I think. So we need to go to God with a repentive heart every time we go to him. God is after a spiritual rebirth. A spiritual rebirth. A new creation, a man that has been truly born again. God wants a heart and life that are focused upon Jesus Christ and that keep the commandment of Christ. It's not about your baptism. The baptism is important and I explain it. The baptism doesn't wash away sin. The baptism doesn't get you into heaven. And I, I hate to use this because sometimes some folks use it out of context. The thief on the cross was not baptized. The thief on the cross wasn't a church member. So although these are important in context, we cannot rely on those things to take us to heaven. We are deceived if we believe so. And we need to come to spiritual reality. The only man who is acceptable to God is the man who has given his heart and life to Christ and who lives righteously, trusting God to accept his faith in Christ. Romans two, verse twenty-eight to twenty-nine says, "A person is not a Jew who is only, who is one only outwardly, nor is circumcision merely outward and physical. No, a person is a Jew who is one inwardly." And circumcision is the circumcision of the heart. By who? By the Spirit, the Holy Spirit, not by the written code, but by the Spirit. Not by removing the flesh from you know where circumcision is done. That is the written code. But it is done by the circumcision of your inner man, by the Spirit of God. Such a person's praise is not from other people, but from God. The second part, when we look at the twofold points to say God is not unfaithful, that was what we just completed. I'm gonna look at God never cancels his word or promises. He never has and never will be a liar. God has promised salvation and eternal life to men, even if there should never be a single person who believe God's promise. His promise will stand. He will, he would still save any person who did what he asked. I have... Okay. Yes, let me continue. I was just looking at the chat, there was something there. The problem, so we said that his promise still stands and he would save any person who did what he said. The problem is in doing what God says. That's where the problem is. In coming to God as he dictates. I've come across people who wants to come to God on their own terms. They live in sin, they practice sin. And they're coming in the church and they want to tell the pastor or the elders how they are coming to God. You, we have to stop them. And if they refuse to turn away, I'm sorry. We have to just preach and tease the truth. You don't understand the things of God. You're not studying the word of God. By the way, you don't have the Spirit of Christ living in you. Therefore, you cannot interpret the word of God. Cause it's a spirit knows what the spirit is saying. When you're not a believer in Jesus Christ and his spirit doesn't live in you, you just read the Bible like a novel, like as a good book. But you cannot get the nourishment from the word of God. But some people don't know that. And they will say to me, I have friends who say, "Man, I read my Bible every day, man. Every day I read my Bible. I'm a prayer tool." But they don't understand and they're unteachable. And you try to correct them, they don't get it. Excuse me. Sorry. Um, God demands that men give their hearts and live to his son. Sorry. God demands that men give their heart and lives to his son, Jesus Christ. God demands that man live for Christ, worship and obey him. But this is too hard for men. They want an easier salvation. They want to be able to do something, get over with it and then be free to live as they wish, giving God some attention here and there. So they just want to do something, probably just baptize deacon or just become a church member and just get over that. So you know what? I've done that. I've gotten over that. And then I can now live free and say, yeah, man, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a Christian. A word that is used very loosely. You know? At one side, I started just to run and say Christians, I'm a follower of Christ. Cause this word Christian is used so loosely. Even in forms, what's your religion? Christianity, anything Christian, you don't know about. It's used loosely in our society. So people take it like that. You know? But they just wanna do that and then they give God some attention now and then. Especially when they probably get hurt. Something bad happen in your family. That's when they come to God. And sometimes God allows it to happen to get their attention. Yes, sir. A stone passed through and so forth. But you know, the difference is that if you were building up yourself from day one in the word of God, you would know that Jesus said in this life, you will have trouble. And know that he overcome, because he overcome, he overcame. Now you too are overcomers because he lives in you. Remember? I have been crucified with Christ. It's not I who live, but Christ who live in me. The life I now live is by faith in the one who died for me, who loves me and died for me. So when we are living the life and the spirit of Christ is living in us, that is when we can give thanks in all circumstances. When you're on top of the mountain, when you're in the valley, when you're climbing up the slope and it is hard. Or when you're slipping down from the mountaintop and you cannot hold on to anything to break your slide, you still give thanks because that's the will of God for you who are in Christ. If you're not in Christ, you cannot give thanks in those circumstances. You're gonna be running up and down. You're gonna be questioning God. God, how could you make this happen to me? I am a church member for donkey ears. And God, you made this, you're living on the wrath of God because you're not... Am I shouting? My wife is on? Yeah, she would say, Gerald, you're shouting. But you know, I, I, I'm so passionate, forgive me when it comes to that. Therefore, men, because they just wanna pass through the system, just do things and live as they like, go to the parties same way. And there's no transformation, you know? Buy the lottery same way and all those things. And then they give God some attention here and there. Therefore, men prefer to be saved by being religious. Being baptized, joining a church, buying a Bible and then being free to go about their own life. But this is not enough for God. It is not doing everything that God says. It is not giving one's heart and life to live for Jesus Christ by obeying, worshiping and serving him. Therefore, God charges the religionists with sin. And God judges and condemns the religionists. I pray that there's none among us. And if there's any, that we repent. And the moral is too, remember? Remember? Note another fact. God fulfills his word by judging the religionists. God has told men how to live and what would happen if they fail. You were warned. Therefore, he is justified in his saying by following through and by judging the religionists. Because he made it clear to you. You hear the gospel, you hear the preaching, you read it in the Bible, you see your parents live it, you see other Christians live it. But you choose not to live accordingly to the word of God. God will not cancel or break his word. He will fulfill it all. God is justified by fulfilling his word by doing exactly what he said. That is, in accepting men only as he said and in judging men if they do not come to him as he commands. And I have the last section. And I mentioned earlier to those who are on, I, I mentioned that I wanted to pause here because I have so many folks on right now. I'm looking at thirty-five and some folks are doubled up. And in the sanctuary here, I have seven. So we're in our forties and I want to make an appeal. It came into my spirit today to make an appeal to you guys. And I want to do it when I have a big audience. The question I pose to both you inside here and online. Do you know a fellow member of the church Scarborough Family Worship Center who does not come online or in person to Bible study? A member, someone that you talk to? I mean, those who are here now. It's hard for you to know all the thirty-five persons online. But I'm trying to appeal to us, members of the church. There's folks who don't get this kind of teaching. They never did and they're not getting it. And they're not on Bible study. I'm appealing to you fellow members of the church. And who are online, not a member. You have friends and family and so forth who needs this teaching. If you truly love one another as Christ says, "Love one another." I'm gonna ask you to reach out to these people. And I'm not saying this because I'm a great teacher. I am not a great teacher. I'm not a great teacher. I won't consider myself that. But if you love your fellow believers who might be on their way to hell, reach out to them, Sister Arton, Sister Shaw, Sister Brown. In a loving way, Sister White, Coswin, Brother Arton and Sister. And as I reach out to them in a loving way, say, hey, you know, are you coming on Bible study? Say, yes, I come, okay. You know, you know, sometimes I'm online, I don't see her. And I just ask you because I really want us all to grow and mature in the word of God. You know? I have had conversation with a person who don't see the importance of Bible study. So we need to just reach out to people who don't see them. Listen, even if the person works, different people of different kind of work. So they could sign on and some work allow you to put in your earpiece and you listen. You might hear something you never hear before. And you can ask about it and you can research it and so forth. Some people find it difficult to make this sacrifice from seven to eight-thirty, half, one and a half hour, to learn something that will help your soul and help you to help someone else. I'm making an appeal, my folks online. I'm asking you, look around, see people, you know them. If they're not online, call them up. You don't want, when the final judgment, you see them in the wrong line. And then you're gonna say, oh my God, I thought this person was on track. We have, and that's what we, why we are a community of believers. We have to look out for each other. All of us are not at the same level of spiritual maturity, mental maturity, all kinds of material, emotional maturity. We have to be concerned and care about our fellow brethren. Listen, make yourself vulnerable to ask someone why they're not in Bible study. You have the book club. You have a few people in the book club. I think it was about ten met on Tuesday. And these people are crazy about what they're learning. You heard Coswin, he, he was put up there to testify and he start talking about book club. Because he's learning from the book club. He even says that he want to be like John, um, John, what's his name again? Yeah, he wants to be like the author, John Bivier. You know? So we, we, I'm, what I'm appealing to you guys who are a member of this church and even if you're not a member of this church, get engaged. It can't be business as usual. The world is dying. Your children is looking on you. Your spouse is unsaved. Get engaged. I'm finished. Not Bible study. We have another twenty minutes to go. We have another twenty minutes to go. And it's the last, um, subsection, I think we can finish in that twenty minutes. And that last subsection says that is God unjust if he punishes the. The, um, the unrighteous. So someone, you guys inside have been taking away all the readings. So I don't want no one on the inside to read now. I want someone on the online to read Romans three verse five to eight.
But if our unrighteousness brings out God's righteousness more clearly. What shall we say? That God is unjust in bringing his wrath on us? I am using a human argument, certainly not. If that were so, how could God judge the world? Some, someone might argue, if my falsehood enhances God's truthfulness and so increases his glory. Why am I still condemned as a sinner? Why not say, as some slanderously claim that we say, let us do evil, that good may result? Their condemnation is just.
Thank you very much, Sister Shari. Oh, this one here, yeah. Uh, I guess a lot of people use this. The question is, really, is God unjust if he takes vengeance? If my unbelief and sin give God a chance to prevail, come on. My sin gave God's a chance to prevail and to show his justice. Then my sin brings greater glory to him. So you know, why, 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 why should he, yeah, he's, he's benefiting from my sin? So, so why, why is there a problem? That's basically, it gives him a chance to fulfill his words. How can he punish me for that? Come on, God, how could you punish me for that? Cause when I sin, it shows that you are perfect. Is he not unjust in inflicting punishment? Well, this answer to this is fourfold. Fourfold, first and foremost, God forbid. Not at all. Away with such thought, if you have that thought or had that thought, away with it, no, never. That thought doesn't come into place. But it's a easy way for Satan to deposit that in your heart as a couplet. From believing God and the things that are. Second, God is moral, therefore, he must judge the world. He would not be moral and just if he did not judge the world. We want the God, a knockover God, you know that, don't judge the world. And you have people who teaches that hell is not real. Hell is only the separation from God. Totally without any chance of coming back, that's what some folks teaches. And that's why we have to careful where we get our spiritual food from. Hell is as real as when the stove burn you. Hell is real. But people come up with all kinds of teaching. The third thing is that such an argument is contradictory. Think about it, if my sin and disobey, and disobedience. Give God a chance to demonstrate his righteousness, why then am I being called a sinner for that? My sin is really a good thing. It gives God a chance to show how good he is. I may sin, yes, but only good has come out of it. When God accept me as I am, a sinner. God has a chance to show his glorious mercy and uh, his gloriously merciful he is. How gloriously merciful he is. He can't condemn me for giving. You can't condemn me for giving God a chance to show his mercy. Think about that, that's how some people might be feeling. It was a bit of. Man, you have people out there, man, who are messed up. People, they are messed up, the enemy deposited things in their mind, they are blind, their mind is blinded. And the thing is that they cannot help themselves. We, the church, have to pray and tarry. That God will remove the blindness from their spiritual eyes, that they will see the light of the gospel. And that's why we, we have to live righteously among them. Because they can feel that they need something deacon. But when they look in the church and see how we carry ourselves. And how we live among ourselves. They don't want any part of us. And I tell you, the enemy is behind this. The enemy attacks the believer and because you are not discerning and you are not forgiving. And you have not surrendered to God, you have not will over your life, the enemy is attacking the believers. And then the believers start live mediocre Christian life. Now the unbeliever who knows they need God, look at the mediocre Christian life you're living and say, you know what? I'm living a better life than them. And you know what, the enemy is not attacking them because the enemy have them where he wants them. So he's not attacking them, so they're having a nice life, but we should know that whatever we are in Christ is with us. And we are victorious, but you can only live like that, Sister Brown, when you're totally surrendered. Stop sitting on the fence of Christianity with your mind in the world and your body on the fence. You are ripped from within. You are ripped from within and, and we are gonna be held accountable. Because there are sinners out there and they want to come, but we're not living the life. Number four, the condemnation of persons who argue this point is just. The point that we just uh, talk about, about being a sinner and God accepting you. A person who. Argue this point, their condemnation is just, remember, it's not we condemning them, no. It's God. We have no right to condemn no person in this life, regardless of their sins. Regardless of what they do, we have no right to condemn them. Jesus is the only one who have the right to condemn anyone. So the condemnation for, of persons who argue this point is just, it is not unjust. Such arguments are common among every generation of people. But the argument are gross deceptions. A person exclaims, a God of love cannot take vengeance. He is too good and too loving. He will be denying his very nature of love if he judge me, that's a crazy person. And sad to see some people think like that and they go and live in their life every day. Like that until when it comes to their deathbed. And the reality is strict there, but we don't know what God do, does in that moment. But we know what we ought to do, we ought to live as Christ lived in this world. The man who is waiting for his deathbed might not have a dead bed, he might just have an accident on the road. And his or her life snuffed out of that person right during it, to the even get the chance to say Lord of mercy. But when we live in the word of God, we have an assurance. We have an assurance of heaven. But we are not to be Christians because we want to go to heaven. If we do that, we're just checking off the boxes. You are to be a Christian because you're in a love relationship with Jesus Christ of Nazareth. And he said, wherever he is, he wants you to be. So heaven is a byproduct of your relationship with Jesus Christ. Don't worry about heaven, worry about your relationship with Christ. Cause heaven is a must for you if you're in a love relationship, an intimate relationship with the son of God. No two ways. What this argument fails to see is that genuine love is just. Love expressed unjustly is not love. It's a license, it's indulgence. God's perf- God's love is perfect, absolutely unbiased and impartial. It is shed upon all, God love is shed upon all. John three verse sixteen, for God so loved the world. That he gave his only begotten son. That whosoever the drug is, the prostitute, the thief, the whatever, believe. On him should not perish or shall not perish, but have everlasting life. It is not a license, it is not a license and indulgence, neither can it be. Not in its perfection, that's God's love, the true love, neither can it allow license and indulgence. It cannot allow people who are just seeking a license to live their own life. God's love is completely and perfectly just, it demands justice. In no respect can it be unjust by failing to judge. Neither can God be accused of being unloving when he execute justice. God's love is just, God's justice is demon- the demonstration of perfect love. The cross was where God taken is perfect justice upon his son. For our sin, on the cross, he took the perfect justice upon his own son. And it is the perfect example of the glorious truth. The cross is the perfect demonstration of both the love and justice of God. My thought, the cross is the perfect demonstration of God's love and justice. Think about that, the cross is where love and justice meets. The cross, who is on the cross, Jesus, the love is shown for, for, for dying for us. But remember, when he comes again, he comes the first time to save humanity. When he's coming back the second time, he's coming to judge. Justice and love meets in the cross. Men shall be judged and condemned if they have rejected. The love and salvation of God provided in his son. Jesus Christ, you see, it's about the rejection of Jesus now. Is the opposing of Jesus, that's the issue. There's only one way to the Father. He's the way, the truth and the law, no one can go to God except through Jesus. And then we reject him, we put him off. We don't get as close as we ought to. We don't get as close as we ought to in Jesus. You know, my prayer sometimes that God, I want to be so close as it is humanly possible to you. I, I, I mean Apostle Paul said, follow me as I follow Christ and I respect that. Cause Apostle Paul see the risen Savior, he can be a stepping stone to be like Jesus. But ultimately, I want to be like Jesus. Ultimately, and that's what we need to do as believers. For the Bible said in Matthew sixteen verse twenty-seven. For the son of man shall come in his glory of his father with his angel. And then he shall reward every man according to his works. That brings me to the end of tonight with four minutes to go. I know I have been the only one talking. But if there any one of you who want to share a testimony or to share something. Feel free to do so. Oh, Sister Eloise did put up her hand about, about, um, five, six minutes ago. So I'm gonna give her a chance to say what she wanted to share, Sister Eloise. Unmute Sister Eloise, yes.
Master, good evening.
Good evening, Sister.
I actually lose my, my train of thought, but.
Okay, sorry about that, I didn't see the hand going up.
Yeah, uh, thank you, sir, that's fine. Um, this is, this is a, a, a concern, um. To, to, um, to the, the kingdom of God, uh, it should be a concern. Because we're, 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 uh, when we, when we look at God. As, um, the author of his word. Uh, and expect God to, to adjust to our, our way of life. Instead of we, uh, as believers adjusting to the, the commands of God. And, and be serious about our relationship with him. Um, it, it is indeed a concern. And I, I believe that it is because sometimes of where we get our information. Sometimes we go online, we hear all these, um, things throw out. Um, the Bible says that if after we have received the truth. Um, there are many warnings in the scripture, many, many warnings. But a few, um, warnings that we have received as believers is that. When we receive the truth of God's word, we should not tamper with God. Uh, the scripture a- uh, asks us, shall we continue in sin that grace may abound? The Apostle Paul said, God forbid. Uh, we cannot test God and say, because God will benefit from our bad behavior. Um, so if we continue to live the way we lived when we were in sin. Uh, God is a just God and so he will, what we're doing is, is, um. Belittling God and Jesus Christ. Uh, for what he has done, for what Christ has done on the cross. We cannot willfully sin against God, abuse the word of God and feel as believers. That we are, we justify ourselves and say, God will forgive me. Because I'm a sinner who sins. We have to be very careful of what we, oh, we apply God's word. In these last days, and no wonder. Uh, sometimes uh people. Uh, they're sitting in 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 the congregation of the righteous, but they are lost, lost. I I think truth is what we need, we need truth, if we willingly. Abuse God's love, and this is what this writer Paul is saying. Don't tamper with God's grace and his love. So that you can justify it to yourself that. God is merciful, God is kind, God is just, and he will forgive me anyway. And as a matter of fact, I'm doing a benefit to God or his kingdom. In sinning so that he can prove himself to be just in forgiving me. Brethren and friends, let's go back to the.
Not hearing you so good, sis. Okay, thank you very much, Sister Minister Walters. For highlighting the need for us to be really genuine in our faith. And so forth. Um, so we're gonna close off with a prayer, I'm gonna invite everyone to pray. Especially for our convention. Which is in a few days, today's Wednesday, so you have Thursday, Friday. Um, in two days' time is our convention. Um, for the members of this church who will be attending, please Friday, please to be early. Cause we will have uh uh we'll march in. They're having this uh procession where the church is marching with their pastor leading them. And I don't want to be alone. So um the the march will be, we're to meet there for six thirty. The pastors need to meet there for six P M, so. Um, come out early and be a part of that procession. Um, we're gonna be, and then we have Saturday from ten A M. Lunchtime is about one, one thirty. And then two thirty, we're gonna have business conference. And then we have dinner after the business conference that finishes approximately four. And we'll go back to the evening session that starts at six. And then remember Sunday, the 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 we'll start at two thirty. Not in the morning because there's another congregation that uses that space. So we are gonna start two thirty. Um, guys, come out, there will be no church here. And um Sunday come in, okay? And just to let you know that um Bible studies for the thirteenth. Of August and the twentieth of August will only be on Zoom. Okay, I won't be in the country, but we will still be having Bible study on Zoom. We don't want to miss this kind of teaching. I didn't hear that Sister Shaw. So um if there's nothing else, I'm just gonna ask us all. To just go to God in prayer, remember those who are not well among us. We continue praying for them, remember those who are bereaved. Remember the the cemets. And that what happened is fresh in their mind. And let us bear up each other, and remember also my appeal. My appeal, appeal to your fellow brethren because you love them, some people don't see the importance of Bible study. And remember. Brother, brother, but Deacon is asking for prayer, cause you know he was, he's not well right now with his foot. Um, and we are trusting God that he will be fully restored, so let us all pray. Oh, one second, one second, sorry, go ahead, Sister Brown. Yes, yeah, she messaged me, yes. Yeah, concussion. Yes, thank you for reminding me, she did text me here and I read the text and respond to her. Um, that's Sister Linda, she is a part of T N C C, but she attends our Bible study. And she had a concussion about ten days ago, she said. And she's asking for prayer, I think she was probably on tonight or maybe she's on now. She said she would not be able to stay very long, but she'll be coming on for short, so let us remember all those requests, okay? Let us go to God in prayer. Heavenly Father, we. Grace and your mercy. We thank you, Lord, for who you are, we thank you for providing us with this kind of. Teaching, the interpretation of God, I thank you for the turnout online. And the turnout in person. I I I pray, God, that we, we leave here refreshed. And God will take in these words and apply to our lives. And that we can so live out what you. Want from us and that you will have the perfect, the right place in our life. Father. Let these words rest upon the fleshing plate of our hearts. Help us to, oh God, revisit these scriptures. Oh God, Father, we thank you, Father. As this organization, Church of God of Prophecy Eastern Canada. Is going into their convention conference. Oh God, on the first of August to the third. Father, we pray for your divine intervention. Father, we pray that we would not be going through the motion. We pray that we're not just being religious, oh God. But God, that we are living out, fleshing out. What you want us to do, that the world will see the good works. They will see the light as we shine in a dark place. And they will come to serve you as God and Savior of their lives. Father, there are many among us who are not well. Oh God, there are many mature members who has. Their maturity comes on them, it comes with aches and pains and all kind of illness. But we still look to you as a healer, the one who heals the nation. The barmen healer, Father. I commit each and every one in your hand who is not well today. Remember those who are bereaved, oh God. Remember the Dunk, the Davis still out of country when to lay to rest. Mother and father. Father, remember Nicola and Akeem. Oh God, as they process what happened, but you know. Because you're God, you know what was gonna happen and in your perfect wisdom. You have allowed it, we embrace whatever you have done because you're the perfect God. Father, remember Brother Arton. And oh God, restoration of his leg, Lord, we pray for. He is a very committed man, oh God, and we pray, God, that you will touch him. Father, remember Sister Paulette Jones. Oh God, she's online in your studies. Oh God, remember all those who are hurting, remember your daughter, Sharnet Williams. As she goes through her challenges. Father, remember all those who require. Your love and affection at this moment, Father, I might forget the names, remember Sister Janora. Morgan, remember Sister Travlin Dixon. There are so many names, oh God, you know each and every one of them. So Lord, I commit everyone in your care and say thanks in Jesus's name, amen, amen. Thank you, thank you, thank you, I don't know what I. I had a lovely time. I hope everyone had a wonderful time. As I say. Good night to each and everyone, good night Bishop Walters.
Good night Pastor.
Sister May, good night, Sister Berch, good night, nice having you. Yeah, hey, Anna, nice having you on, Anna. Brother Roderick. Person.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for coming, I know you're tired, just coming back from Jamaica, yeah? Brother Sam Brown, um Sister Paulette Jones. Going down the line, let me see, Sister Dawn Edwards, Minister Walters. iPhone, 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 alright, Sister Jody J, Sister Molly. Good night, um Samsung S M S seventy two. One W, you're tired of me calling you that and you've refused to say who you are. But I love you and I'm glad you're here, Sister Sandra, I don't see your your twin. Um, Sister Shamona, oh Sister Shamona, boy. Uh, Sister Samona, preach Sunday, wow. And tonight she's on, I thank you so much for coming, Sister Dunkley. Sister Gray, Sister Norma Francis, Sister Rose. At westernfood.com. Thank you for coming, I am not sure. Uh, that is what, thank you for.
Our full Bible study, I enjoy every word out of your mouth.
Oh, who 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 is that? Oh, Sister Travlin, okay, thanks, Mrs. Tugman.
Good night Pastor, good night.
I owe you a call, I'm gonna give you a call.
Okay.
Yeah, I expressed my, what I'm calling about, I expressed it earlier to burial, but I didn't get to call you.
Okay.
Alright.
No problem.
Uh, take care, everyone. Good night, everyone, see you at convention, those who are here in Canada.
Good night, family, good night.
Good night.
Yes, Bishop, good night.
What can I talk to you about?
Jules, I didn't see you were on. You're you're muted, Jules, you're muted, I'm not here, oh, I should have welcomed you, because. Uh, Jackman Leroy Boucher. Um, he was on tonight for the first time. Um, I didn't get to welcoming, but next time I'll do that, alright, take care. Jules, take care, we'll talk, alright, bye bye.
Hi Pastor.